Hello, welcome to the Exam Success Workshop. It's a two-part series. In the previous webback section, we have gone through the objective test. And today's section, we will go through the case study. My name is Samuel Lee. I'm the Study Support and Learning Manager from FEMA. And I am a FEMA member myself. For the benefit for those just joining this section, but not the previous one, a very brief introductions about myself. So I started my career as an executive trainee with Jardine Matheson in Hong Kong. And this is why I studied FEMA. I was under the sponsorship by my employer. I became a management consultant in 2008 and joined FEMA in 2011. I worked and lived in Africa, Asia, Australia, and Europe before. And now I'm based in Singapore with global responsibility. This roughly what we're going to cover in today's section. We're going to go through the case study examinations, some of the key facts that you need to know, you know, what you need to do to pass the examinations. To do that, I'm actually going to do a walkthrough demonstration with you. I'm going to use the March 2015 strategic level case study. Today's session is a general one, but then I would use the strategic level case study as a demonstration. But the technique and some of the approach we are using will be the same for all levels. Again, at the end of the presentation, I'm going to share with you some of the useful links that links to the material on FEMA Connect or other links that, you know, I think will be useful for your exam preparations. Again, I'm sure you are familiarized with the updated 2015 FEMA qualifications. And now we have a total of seventeen subjects to go before you finish your qualifications. We've gone through the subjects, which is like E1, P1, F1, E2, P2, F2, E3, P3, F3 yesterday. And these subjects are tested by objective test questions, which is available all year round. To find out more about objective test and exam technique and study tips on these, you can refer to the previous webback section we did. Today, we're going to focus on the case study, which you will see will be, there's now one case study at the end of each level. There'll be operational level case study, management case study, and the strategic case study. While the objective test mainly will test the knowledge, you know, whether you know a theory, you know how to do a calculation, the case study focused in testing your ability to apply knowledge to a real-life scenario and your communication skill. The case study examination will cover the knowledge from all three pillars. So for example, if you're doing the operational case study, that will cover the syllabus content of E1, P1, and F1. And when you finish the case study, that means you complete that level. And then you'll receive an intermediate award, and then you're allowed to move on to next level. Under the 2015 syllabus, you would not be able to move ahead. So first of all, you need to complete your three subjects within a level and in the case study before you can move to the next level. For those of you who may be joining us through the professional or master gateway route, the gateway examination is equivalent to the management case study examination. Of course, when you enter for the exam, it would say it's a gateway exam. But you can use the same material and the same technique as the management case study. This is the CGMA competency framework, which is the foundation of the 2015 FEMA professional qualification syllabus. It is a result of a very comprehensive research that we did between 2012 and 2014 around the world with over three thousand employers. The key question we asked them would be, if you're employing someone in finance, in accounting, in business, what is the quality you're looking for? What is the competency you need from these employees? And not surprisingly, the answer we get around the world is pretty similar. And there are four main skills the employer are looking for. Number one is technical skill, which means whether you have the ability to do the number crunching, whether you can apply accounting and finance skills. However, more and more employer is saying it's very important that people have business skill. So that you're not just knowing your accounting theory, your accounting regulations, or your models for management, but you're able to apply it in the context of the business you're working in. So this is business skill. Of course nowadays, we'll be working with people, whether you're in school, you will be working in projects, in the working setting, you will have boss, you have subordinate, you have your team members as well. So it's very important that employees are able to work effectively with other people, to be able to influence people. So this is people's skill. Last but not least is the leadership skill. We believe that accountants and finance people are in the best position to lead the company because they have got good financial understanding of the business and also have a good understanding of how the business operates. So we're actually hoping that our members can demonstrate a strong leadership skill, how they can influence, how they can make impact, how they can help the organizations to add value. So this is the CGMA framework. And it's very important, especially when it comes to case study. Because for each level of the case study, we have a very specific persona or a role-play character that we have in mind. So when you're doing a case study, you're actually doing a role-play as if you're working at a certain position in a company. And we have given you this character. And each character would have a very different mix of the skills that I mentioned. For example, in the operational level, we're assuming that you are a finance officer. You report to the finance manager. And your focus will be more like the day-to-day operations, more short-term focus. So you can see the mix at this level will still be very much focused in the technical skill, which you can see in the red color here is sixty-four percent. Whereas leadership is only six percent, which is not surprising because you're just starting out at your career, you're still quite junior in organization. So you, of course, you would not be able to, you know, be a leader at this stage. But at the same point, we want you to demonstrate an appreciation of leadership. And you can see the picture would change and the leadership will actually increase as you move to the management and the strategic level. When you move to the strategic level, which is the most advanced, we assume that you're already the senior finance manager, and you'll be reporting directly to the CFO or making recommendations to the senior management team, the board of directors. So your focus will be more long-term, thinking about the strategies of the company, what is the, you know, the any sort of long-term strategic plan. So you can see the mix is very different at this level. We move away from heavy focus from the technical skill, but you can see a much more balanced approach. And it's twenty-five percent each for this level at technical to the leadership skill. We're going to come back more about this different competency at different level and how they will impact and how they will affect your preparations or how you do exam for the case study. We'd like you to remember very clearly when you do a case study exam, like which level you're at, and what is your role-play character. If you are, for example, you know, quite junior, but you are in your real life, actually doing the strategic level, you need to elevate yourself to that senior finance manager level and try to see beyond what you're normally doing on a day-to-day basis because it's the requirement from the examiner. So because we're trying to use the case study to mimic what a real-life work experience is like, if you're not going to get your traditional exam-style questions and your answer will not come in the traditional way as well. So this is what you will get in your examinations. You're going to get the form of questions or requirement is coming in the form of an email, which is most company type of communications that we'll receive at work. So this is one of the examples that show in practice, this is for operational level. But again, the style will be very the same for all level. So there's an email from the finance director, and then, you know, who will talk about, you know, some of the issues that he has seen in the work. And sometimes you can even see there will be extra information given here. For example, you can see the box exhibit. So when you click in the exhibit, there will be further information. So this will be a cash forecast that someone has done. During examination, you'll be able to refer to the email that your boss sends you, extra information here attached along with the email, and also the pre-seam material that you'll be given earlier. Sometimes you'll be given other information in exam as well. For example, you may be given a business report or newspaper cutting. Again, this is just to showcase how dynamic, how much things can change in real-life business world. A lot of the times, you know, your boss may see something, maybe from a newspaper cutting, you know, from the competitor, and that may trigger some internal actions and discussion as well. So we need to be able to respond to these triggers that we see in, you know, in a real-life form. As you can see, we're trying to make it as interesting, as real as possible. The way you answer your questions, again, will be very similar to how you didn't work in the form of an email. So for this question here, you need to write an email back to Mr. Harris, which is your boss. As you can see from the screen here, the format is quite straightforward. We have purposely and intentionally make it as simple as possible so there's no functions to create any table, to create any graph, you will not be using Excel. The reason for this, we want to make sure even those, for those people who may not be so familiarized with the word processing or using in a program like Excel would not be at the disadvantage of these examinations. So we just try to keep the answer box as straightforward as possible. You just simply type in it. You can do the cut and paste within the box, but not from the main text in the box here. You're able to use very simple formatting, like bold, italic, and underline, but you won't be able to do bullet point. And as I said, you won't be able to require to draw graph or do a table as well. So some of the key facts to note, examination will be three hours long. There'll be no extra reading time, like, you know, some of you may have experienced before in the previous syllabus. So three hours is all you get for examination and that including the reading time. There'll be a pre-seam available before each exam sitting, and you can download that from FEMA Connect seven weeks before examinations. So they can easily find on the FEMA Connect under the study resources. Each exam sitting will have a different pre-seam. So the March pre-seam will be retired after sitting, and you'll get a new pre-seam for the May sitting. And each level, again, will have a different pre-seam as well. During examination, you will have between three to five tasks or sections in each examinations. And each task will have a very specific time assigned to it. You will need to complete your task within the time given. Even if you have not completed your task, you'll be forced to move on to the next section. In the case you finish earlier before the time and you want to move on, which is possible. But once you've moved on to the next task, you would not be able to return to the previous task. First of all, I think the time limit is to mimic, you know, again, what is happening in real-life situations. For example, if your boss is writing an email asking something for you for the deadline with the end of today, and that means today, not tomorrow, not next week. So we have to be able to work under tight time constraint as we will do in real life. The second reason why we have made this decision is because in the past, we see a lot of students failing the examination, not because they have not worked hard or they do not know the knowledge. It's simply because of very poor time management. They focus all the time on maybe one single question and therefore not leaving enough time to complete the whole exam. So we are trying to use this system to also help the students to move on to the next sections and not, you know, trying to attempt as many tasks as possible. The task will not be written depending on each other, even though they're based on the same pre-seam company. So for example, the first task will have the date for today. And in the second task, it will say one month later or one week later. So the story has already moved on. So this is why you won't be able to go back and change your, what you have written before once you've moved on to the next task. Again, this is to mimic what is happening in the real life. A lot of the time, you know, once we hit the send button from the email, the email is gone. Even if you try to use the retrieve function, ninety-nine percent of the time, it won't be working already. So again, the recommendation we give to students is fully utilize the time that you're given within a task and that only move on when you have thoroughly checked and you feel confident about it. Do not hastily try to move on to the next section. The case study will be marked by marker in UK because it's a case study. So there is possible to have more than one possible answer, and then we do welcome alternatives. So this exam will be marked by human, not by computer, and you only get the results after four to five weeks after the end of the exam period. Each year, there'll be four exam window a year, and each window, there'll be up to five days. The exam windows will be in March, in May, in August, and in November. And each the exam window will have five days from Tuesday to Saturday. You can go to see the exam anytime during the exam window, depending on the availability of the exam center. We do recommend you to book as early as possible, just to make sure that you can arrange the time that, you know, that you prefer. Case study, because it's a bit more complex, so you will not be able to change very closely the exam time period. So you will have to change latest is fourteen working days before the exam period. But again, we do recommend you to try to book your time and schedule it as early as possible to avoid last-minute disappointment. Because there will be five days, five days per window, so each exam sitting, there'll be up to five variants. When we say variants, that means different story or for more contemporary terms is different parallel universe. For example, in variant one, the company will be doing very well and looking for new business opportunity, may maybe project, then would maybe mergers, acquisitions happening. But in this, for the same company, but in the different variant, a different story, a the parallel universe, the company may be having financial difficulties and looking for, you know, ways to rescue the company, to stop it from failing. So it mimics again how business can change very quickly in the real life. And it also means that even if two people go to see the examination exactly on the same day, at the same time, at the same center, they may be presenting completely different story, different variants. These will be selected randomly by the system. The pre-seam case, as I showed you earlier, is available to view throughout the examination via the pop-up windows. You would not be allowed to bring in your own copy. In fact, there's no paper will be allowed in the exam center. These are truly paperless examinations. For those who want to make notes, you'll be given a script board that you can write. It's laminated piece of plastic that you can write with your felt tip in the exam center. Or if you prefer, there's also an on-screen scratch pad that you can make notes. The screen will be remain open for the whole examination, but please note that it's not possible to copy and paste from that to the answer box. So if you want to do your answer planning, our recommendation is for you to actually do the answer planning both in the answer box itself. So you will not be wasting time re-typing your plan again in the answer box. Again, for this year, it's possible to bring in your own calculator, but only selected model. We recommend you to check regularly on FEMA Connect on the latest informations about exam day arrangement. So what is required to pass the case study? There's two main criteria that students have to fulfill to pass these case study examinations. Number one, you need to get eighty out of one fifty, which is a scale score, to pass examinations. This is equivalent to sixty percent, but because of there are five variants, some variant may be slightly more difficult than the others. And we want to ensure a fairness across, you know, all variants. So there'll be some moderation is being applied. And the result of that is when you receive your results, you will not get your marks out of a hundred, but out of one fifty instead. And the passing mark here is eighty out of one fifty. This is the first criteria. Please note that you should not convert this back to percentage because of the moderation being done, and it's not a direct conversion. But this will showcase you how far you're away from passing or how strong your pass actually is. The second criteria that you need to meet to pass examination is to meet the minimum threshold against each competency. Remember the four competency we talked about. So together with those four competency, there's another one called integrations. Integration is more like a professional mark, you know, how well the quality of your script. For the operational level, that's three percent for integration, six percent for the management level, and nine percent for the strategic level. There's no need to force integration to happen. You will get a mark if you have fully answered the requirement and write a good quality script. And what we mean by the minimum threshold for all of these competencies approximately is the one-third of the percent of the mix. So for example, the technical skill in the strategic level is twenty-three percent. So the minimum threshold, you have to get at least eight percent in this area to pass your examinations. So that means that you have to first get one fifty out, eighty out of one fifty, and then at least all of your competency, together with the integration, is meeting the minimum threshold. It's possible to fail an examination even if you get out more than eighty, but if at least one of your competency is below the minimum threshold. For each competency, after examination in your my FEMA exam report, you will see three category indicating your performance for that competency. You'll get a fail, which means if your score is below the minimum threshold. And you get a strong when you demonstrate high-level competency. That's we are talking about something more than two-thirds. So moderate is anything in between. So again, it's also possible that you get moderate for all your competency, but yet you failed examinations because you have not demonstrated enough depth. So definitely you have not got at least eighty out of one fifty. So you have to simultaneously fulfill these two requirements to pass an examination. So what will a good answer look like? First of all, I don't think there should be any difference from how you approach a case study to your traditional examinations, or there will be a lot of similarity. First of all, you need to understand the requirements given by the examiner. An answer according to the requirement as was being set. A lot of the time, because of exam stress or because students feel that they have done so much work on a certain topic, they almost feel compelled to put in whatever they know about that topic. So that's what we call brain dummy, and it's not going to be helpful in the examination. So you must answer the exam being set, but not something that you wish to see. Your answer should be logical and coherent. What we mean by logical is you really need to follow your thought, able to see your argument. For example, your company may be in cash flow issue. So you're writing a proposal on how to cut down the cost, you know, on the cost-saving. So you talk about, you know, how your company in trouble and how we need to save costs and some of the cost-saving initiatives. And then suddenly, at the very end, you want to, you mentioned this, oh, but there's this very expensive new equipment we can get, which can help us to save a lot of money. The reader would have difficulty to understand your thought of thinking because all you have been trying to say is, we don't have enough money and we need to save money. And suddenly bam, this new machine coming from nowhere. It could be possible to mention the new machine, but you need to structure your answer in a way that the reader, your boss, able to see where your thought is coming from. That's what we mean by logical and coherent. You should demonstrate a good understanding of theory and principle, but only those that apply to the scenario. Again, so this is not that you just simply name-drop, you know, some theory or incorporate whatever theory you can think of. The theory and principle must be applied well to the specific problems and issue name in the company. Conform to the format required. So if your boss is asking for you for a report or for a briefing note, you should adhere to the format required, especially when you're writing for a report, think about who is your audience, think about the format, you know, whether there will be a tool and whether we from, whether we title for the report. We do recommend students to write in short, concise sentence. Some students say that because this is a case study, it has to be business-like, and they prefer to write very, very long, very clumsy, complicated sentence. This is not recommended. I think the key things you need to remember is communications, is whether your reader, your boss can understand what you're trying to say. So usually, short, concise sentence will work better in this way. Try to make good use of headings and subheadings, again, for clarity of your format. Make it easier for your boss, for the examiner to see different thinking points. We do recommend you use the short paragraph instead of using bullet points. Bullet point is only good for cases that when you only have to list out a list of things without getting much into too much detail. For example, if I need to describe what is an apple, I can say it's a fruit, it's red in color, sometimes in green, it's crunchy, it's sweet. So there's no need for me to further elaborate what I mean by fruit, what I mean by red, what I mean by crunchy. However, if what I'm trying to say is to describe the health benefits or the benefits of eating an apple, it would not be sufficient for me just to say one bullet point, say health. Because that will leave a lot of questions, what do you mean by health? So, you know, in fact, I should be more elaborative and truly say, eating apple is good for your health because it's got a lot of vitamins, there's fiber there, and because, you know, it's also would be good for your teeth as well. So you need to elaborate your answer instead of just giving your one-note keyword. Examiners, you need to understand what you're trying to say. Make use of, you know, underlining, but only selective, otherwise it will get very messy. But most importantly, you need to answer within the time that you're given. The examiner make it very clear that there's no difference in what should earn mark in the case of the exam and what, you know, always about, in a traditional exam, is all about answering the question's requirement. And it has been stressed very, very clearly by the examiner that it's extremely unlikely that a well-prepared student who have answered what is asked would fail to meet the threshold for all the competency. So our recommendation for you is actually to read carefully what is the requirement and try to answer the requirement. There's no need to worry about the competency as a good answer will hit this competency automatically. We can look more closely with the illustration later, but there's no need for you to automatically or to try to force some, you know, theory that in your answer just to prove that you know your technical skill or just to mention any sort of people issues, just to demonstrate that there's some people element. There's no need to do that. The most important is to look at the question requirement and answer accordingly to the requirement. I think the only difference between a strategic, you know, level questions and those from operational level would be the complexity. So, you know, at the more junior level, at the operational level, the requirement will be more strict forward so that you may have more tasks. Whereas at the strategic level, the questions being set will be more complex, you may need a bit more time to explain to your idea. So maximum you will get for a strategic level would be three tasks per examinations. So as I promised, we can actually look at the walkthrough demonstration together. I think this will, again, reinforce some of the point that we have just covered. We can look at the company called Look, which is in fact is the real pre-seam for the March 2015 strategic case study examinations. This case, as I said, because we will have a fresh case after each examination, has retired already, so it would not be re-examined again. And you can find information that I'm showing you here all on FEMA Connect. So after each examination, we'll publish the pre-seam, we'll publish the, all the questions for all variants, all the examiner answer, all the marking guidance, and together with an examiner report. So for those of you who are preparing for your examinations in the future, do make good use of these free resources on FEMA Connect. So the pre-seam, it's very important that you know your pre-seam very well. There'll be no time for you to actually read the pre-seam case during the examination, even if it will be available on screen. You should know it very well, but at the same time, there's no need to remember like the numbers, like the data, the facts by heart, because as I said, it will be available there. But you should know, you know, when they're mentioning some data, you should know if they related to your pre-seam, and therefore you can, you know, refer to it very quickly during the examination. These pre-seam company are fake companies, or definitely they're not real, but they'll pretty much build around like, you know, real-life example. And we're trying to make it look as real as possible. So for example, the company Look, that, you know, for the March examinations, is an internet search company, which is very similar to Google in real life. It's listed with a very high PE ratio. Look has three founders, and each of them have ten percent of the shares, or they have ten percent of the shares, but the majority, but they will, they will still have the majority votes because of the two-tier share structures. There's nine business units within Look. You can see some of the, you know, the business unit, you can probably can see the similarity with Google. For example, Look Search, which is a search engine giving ninety percent of profit, is a very mature market. So this is your Google search. There's a Look Space, which is a map, again, you know, similar to Google Maps, giving you nine-point-four percent of profit. There's a Look Operating System. Um, that's a Look uh operating system, so it's operating on a smartphone, uh, but, you know, losing market as we know. Uh, the the market leader for the smartphones, so operating system is still the Apple iOS or the Android phones. Um, there's a Look app, which is, you know, uh, which download of Looks and third-party apps similar to your Google Play. Uh, Look phone is a premium smartphone, Google did try to uh do their own phone as well, but again, not too successful. Uh, the Look lenses, uh, similar to your Google glasses. Um, Look Media, which is a screen content, and there's also Look Cloud, which is a cloud storage. So you can see this company, uh, even, you know, the name is a makeup name, but in fact, it's quite similar to Google. So it's quite useful to know that when you do your pre-seen analysis, you should try to see, you know, what uh comparing to its competitor in the industry. Uh, so you can, but you need to get yourself familiarized with the company as well as the industry itself. Um, the pre-seen also mentioned that Look has some corporate social responsibility commitment in the area of energy use and staff welfare. Um, there could be questionable corporate governance due to the dominance of the founders. But there's also rumors given a pre-seen that one of the founder is thinking of leaving the company. There are also some data on another company called Friend Time being given in the pre-seen. And of course, it's no surprise, um, it is referring to Facebook is a listed social media site. So you can see in the pre-seen here, there's a lot of possibility that the examiner can take it from here. Um, there can be some questions on the, you know, corporate social responsibility. There could be possibility of some mergers or some collaboration with Friend Time that could be corporate governance issue. Um, I think it's okay to have take a view or have some, you know, guess of what may come up. Again, don't rely on that too much. Um, the main reason is because there are up to five variants of examinations. So yes, you may, you you may speculate and you may speculate correctly, but that may not actually come up in the variant that you will get. Because of up to the five variants, um, there's a lot of possibility. So even if what you guess is correct, it may not come up. So you need to be prepared for, you know, all the different scenario and most important is able to think on the seat during the exam day. So seven weeks before examinations, you will have your pre-seen that you download and you do your thorough research, your analysis on the company. On the exam day, after you go in, you're putting your candidate number, uh, you'll be given the examination structures. So this indicates like how many sections, how many tasks you will have for the examination? And what's the time allowed for each section? So for this um variant four that we're looking at as example, um, there's three section, each section of one task. And the time allowed for each section is sixty minutes. So the time here indicates the approximate marks available for this section. So because the examination is three hours, so sixty minutes will roughly means this, the third section will carry around one-third of the marks of the examination, which is around thirty-three to thirty-four. So it's very important that you have this in mind and you know how you are located because then it within the task, there could be sub-requirements, which I will show you later. So this is the first task that you will get for uh for the March exam variant four. It is an email from Amanda Wilson, which is the finance director and also your boss and you are the senior finance manager. And this email is say that um VJ, one of the founder, is taking the press speculation that he's leaving quite personally. And in fact, you know, he has come up with a new business idea. Um, and Amanda now need to write back to uh VJ, uh, we're covering some two main issues. And she has then asked attach VJ email together with her as well. So when you further scroll down the screen or I click here, you will see the email from VJ. I'll give you a minute to have a look if you have not yet downloaded this before. So this new initiative from VJ is called Look Payment. So again, it it should not be too surprising or should not be a new term for um candidates who are familiarized with online payments or have been using a smartphone before. Uh, again, it's like, you know, the Apple paid app we've been working on. So it's one of the um, the way that you link your credit cards to an online payment uh system. And then you can actually pay directly through the system instead of going through, you know, to use your credit card all the time. So going back to Amanda email, um, I think there's two things she's looking at. And I think that's the time that you need to be very careful uh when looking at the requirement, uh, what is required from your boss. So effectively, there are two things Amanda is asking for in her email, which you can see, um, she's been quite nice and put in bullet points. But watch out, she may not do that as well. So um, she could have just put it in the contents of the email. So this is the time you need to read very carefully. But in this case, just make it very clear that I need you to focus on two issue. Um, my recommendation is that you can now, actually while you're reading, you can use your scratch pad uh with the file tip just to write a few keywords down. So you remember how many things within this task that you're looking for. So here, we know that there's two requirements. It's the first question is, is Look Payment a good strategic fit for Look? And secondly, is what are the risk to Look's reputation from this venture? So for those of you who know your strategic case study or your strategic subjects quite well, you know, you know, when we ask about the strategic fit, this is a topic from E3. And then when we look about the risk, this is a topic from P3. So you can see the examiner is trying to brand in different elements from different subjects in the same questions. So let's look at, you know, how we will approach the answer. Um, because there are two parts here, um, and there's no further indication on how you should spend your time within this one hour. I think, you know, we can just be quite straightforward and just assume both of them would carry the equal marks. And then you should roughly spend about the same time on each uh of the requirement here. So for the first requirement, asking whether it's Look Payment a good strategic fit for the company is having E3, uh, learning outcome B, uh, which is evaluate the process of strategy formulation. Um, overall, I think it is a, you know, it's a good fit. Um, Look is already a well-known and trusted brand. So usually when you use this kind of online payment, you know, one of the key issue that, you know, the customer that will be asking is whether the brand that, you know, you're using, are they trustworthy? Because you'll be giving away your credit card details, so there's quite a lot of personal data information you'll be giving away. So I think one of the deciding factor is whether you can trust this brand. And for Look, because it's already very well established, uh, search engine uh company. So the people would, you know, you know, know this brand well and trust Look already. It's also easy for Look to build a critical mass of business, uh, because it already has a lot of existing clients who advertise on, you know, with the search engine. So another critical success factor for, you know, doing this kind of online payment is whether there's enough supplier who are willing to use that form, accept that form of payment. So I think again, Look at this stage is actually they are in quite good position. There's a lot of potential with this project, uh, to build data and get insight, uh, think about the big data, you know, uh, that you can collect through this process. You can see how people, uh, you know, how the searching pattern, where how many what search can actually generate money? And what is the amount of spending, their spending, you know, per per search? So that's quite a lot of insight you can get and some of these insights, you know, I thought would be useful either for Look or if Look want to to share with a supplier. And I think they will maybe able to use it, you know, for new business uh development as well. Uh, Look is technically, I think it's capable, I mean, again, there's a lot of, you know, you can see that there's a lot of initiative from a company. So I think technically, IT-wise, they're capable to build a system like this. Um, of course, I think that's a genuine lack of finance experience, they didn't have much, you know, experience in dealing with all this payment issue. And I think there could be regulations that, um, they need to comply to with the bank. So there is possible that they need to bring in some, you know, finance expertise in to, you know, help them to get this project done. Uh, overall, I think there's a lot of synergy with the mobile products that Look has been working on. I think with more people, you know, going to do more work or buy stuff from the mobile, having this kind of payment, this one-stop shop would be beneficial as well. So overall, I think it's a quite good fit. So you can see that, you know, there's quite a different, there's a quite few points you can actually develop from looking at the, um, you know, the makeup of the business, what they're doing and what stage they're at each of the business. So, uh, you can see there's a few point you can mention here. And the mapping for this part of the skill is actually mapped under business skills. The second part of the requirement is uh talking about the reputation risk that, you know, may come from this venture. And if testing P3 syllabus area B to evaluate the tools and process required for strategic implementations. So, um, for risk, I think like any other sort of commercial projects, um, that could be a possibility, it could be failure. And of course, like for a big company like Look, you know, if there's, if they roll out this initiative and then, you know, the project is not going to be successful, it's going to cause bad publicity. That people will be saying, hey, has VJ or has your founder lose their edge, you know, the touch of the market and now not able to, you know, create this, you know, very uh amazing product anymore? So that would be, you know, if the project itself failed, there would be bad publicity, so this is a branding risk. Um, Look will also become a target of fraud and hacking because of the nature that, you know, you have to store a lot of credit card details, a lot of personal information. So I think it would become quite an easy target, well, not less than easy, but you know, big target for anyone who, you know, hackers, who are trying to hack into get these informations. And we have heard that, you know, when bank or and any organization not able to protect these very personal informations. Um, again, there will be a lot of bad press, bad publicity as well. Um, customer may receive, you know, fraud email uh using Look logo. So again, you know, I'm sure you have heard of, you know, there will be some people pretending to be a bank or to pretend to be someone they're not, to write email to some of the, you know, the customer and pretend asking them to click on the link to reset the password, but, you know, when they actually do it, it's actually giving away the information. So, uh, of course, it's not within Look control, but again, you know, some of these, um, people may be using Look logo to pretend to be an official email. So again, Look may be associated with this sort of activities. Um, there could be overspending, uh, with the whole Look Payment system. Uh, for example, if you set up your phone to pay automatically and then you're just walking away and maybe your three-year, three-year-old son just come around and play with your phone and accidentally purchase a few sort of items that you never want to purchase, uh, who's going to take ownership of that? So that could be again causing issues and causing complaints from customer as well. Uh, Look is also likely to caught in the dispute between consumer and supplier. So for example, if you want to order a dress online, but when the product arrives, it's actually not what you have expected. Um, you know, as a consumer, you may actually blame Look, you know, for not choosing the supplier carefully and, you know, letting you to be, uh, trapped in this situation. Again, this is not within Look control, but it's quite likely that, you know, there will be disputes, that Look will be trapped in between the consumer and the supplier. And then of course, I mean, we mentioned a lot about the personal data privacy issues, which is a huge concern globally now, you know. What a company collecting information for how long they're keeping it, how they're keeping it, all the security issues. So all of these can lead to um some sort of reputational risk. So again, that's quite rich, you know, you can see there's a lot of elements you can put in there. And for examiner, this part is mapped under technical. So you can see already the examiner trying to in to incorporate, you know, knowledge from two different part of the syllabus from E3 and P3. And at the same time, trying to uh cover two different competencies, the business and the technical skill in the same questions. And you can find more information about this uh in the marking guidance, which will be released after the exam results. So here you can see, uh, as I said, because this section is sixty minutes, so you've got thirty, you know, it's roughly about one-third of the marks of the of the examinations. And you can see clearly there will have been two sub-requirements and each one was worth about half the marks for the that part of the sections. And you can see the mapping. So the mapping of the competency is actually done in the stage of the question setting. Examiner, when they're doing the marking, would not award mark directly to the competency. So, um, therefore, there's no need for student to, you know, artificially trying to force some competency down within the answer script just to show that they can demonstrate people's skill or leadership skill. Because in fact, for this section, there's no, uh, there's no marks associated with the people and the leadership at all. So if you're trying to do that, uh, first you'll be wasting time. And secondly, your answer may not be actually answering what is required by your boss. So again, the suggestion is to focus in the requirement and answer accordingly to that. So the marking guidance, uh, will be available after examination. And I think it's very useful to see the pattern of how the mask will be split up uh between different variants. Um, I think because of this and the nature of the criteria of past examination, it's very important that you do not miss out any sub-requirement per section. For example, for this one, you can see there's forty marks associated with technical skill, which is just out of a total of twenty-three for the whole examinations. If a student has been very careless or for whatever reason, did not answer anything on the risk part, which is about, you know, this forty marks will be gone. I think that's a very good chance that student is, you know, he or she did not perform well in section two under the accounting information system. Uh, he or she may actually not able to pass examination, even if any part is, you know, totally perfect, uh, similarly by not meeting the minimum threshold for technical skill. So you can see it's very important that you read the questions very carefully and not to miss any sub-part. Uh, otherwise, I think there will be huge risk that you will not be able to hit enough point per competency. Um, to find out more about how the competency is mapped, you know, across all subjects, that can, you can refer to your syllabus booklet, which is in page ninety-two to ninety-three here. So you can see the risk that we talked about earlier is mapped under P3 for strategic level and strategies is mapped under E3. Uh, you will see, you know, most of the business, the leadership skill, uh, will be mapped under, uh, E3. Whereas most of the technical skill will be mapped under P3 and F3 in the strategic level. So it's important that you understand the breakdown, but at the same time, when you're answering your exam questions, you should not try to mechanically trying to, uh, think of this as whether it's a E3 questions or a P3 questions. I think again, the recommendation is to refer to what is the requirement and answer accordingly to that requirement. Apart from the marking guidance, after each exam, uh, we are also going to issue an examiner report. So this is similar to the post-exam guide that, you know, we have done before. Um, it basically is give you a overall view on the global performance uh on the examination on that variant. So we actually got a report that cover all five variants. So for this variant four, a task one, just the one that we have walked through. I think generally the examiner say in a reasonable well attempt, um, although some candidate produce quite repetitive answer. Um, it's possible to use the, um, the Johnson and School SFA models, um, which is appropriate. However, I think you need to make sure that you're not repeating the same point over and over again. You're not going to get more marks just by repeating the same point. Exam also comment that has relatively few, you know, explore the big data issue effectively. And of course, for those of you have done SEMA long enough, you know, where there's some comment on this, uh, we can almost guarantee big data would be a recurring theme coming up in to the SEMA examination. So, you know, uh, make sure you're well familiarized with this topic. Uh, identification of risk was generally found with many candidates expanding on the personal profit issue arising from this. So you can see, um, there's quite specific response from examiner on the performance. So again, it's very important you read this report and able to understand, you know, uh, what examiner is trying to get. And also able to see some of the feedback, if people, a lot of people making the same mistake globally, you do not want to make the same mistake again. There are also some very overall sort of general comment, uh, for future candidates as well. So I think the most important one is the main problem where candidate failing to answer what was asked and writing everything they know. So, you know, we talked about the brain dump, um, the brain dumping and using completely irrelevant models. So no need to force a model just to demonstrate you've got technical skill, it should be relevant to the issue mentioned. Um, there's no marks available for random models and, you know, there's no need to give a long list of model as well. Just use what is appropriate to illustrate your answer. Um, I think it's quite shocking to see there's very little evidence of knowledge of the pre-seen material. Um, you know, the pre-seen is given seven weeks before the examination and the expectation is that student should know the pre-seen very well. Um, exam just saying most of the question, uh, it was hoped that the candidate would be able to use industry knowledge and the knowledge of the company to help them to formally answer. Um, so you should not be just writing some, you know, idea, some theory out of context. It should be linked directly to the pre-seen company that you have been studying and, you know, preparing for. Um, some further insights about the case study, um, as I said, we do welcome alternatives and two answer may earn the same mark. So there's no such thing as like there's a one perfect answer. Um, student need to believe in their business sense, uh, you know, and, you know, what they believe in. Uh, when you're asked to make a recommendation, make sure you do recommend and do not fit on defense. Uh, you need to identify what the company could do or should do and of course, just to And of course, justify your answer. Again, there's no good just to say that, oh, you know, we should think about it or we should, you know, pay for a consultant to do it. I think that's not what your boss is looking for from you. So they're, you know, looking to see how you can make recommendations, how you can add value to the process, not asking someone else to do it. Uh, elaborate your answer with why, justify, uh, avoid using bullet points. Some of the magic words is actually quite useful, like because, however, alternatively, um, especially, you know, to show that you are looking at different angles from, uh, for the same issues. And you need to understand and think both in the job role in the pre theme. So, you know, what, you know, if you're the finance officer, how would you think? Or if you're a finance manager or the senior manager, um, the way that you think would be quite different. There will be no specific marks for calculations because, I mean, you won't be able to do very complex calculations like, you know, like a cash flow nor NPV because of not able to use the Excel. Um, you may want to do some very simple calculation to illustrate your answer. But most of the marks will be for interpreting the data, like, you know, for example, like what I show you. Someone would have done the calculations already, but you, you need to understand what those figures mean. Uh, your boss may also say that, you know, he feel maybe some of the, uh, fundamental assumption from the calculation is incorrect and you need to go and check it. So again, it's important that you know the technical part, although you may not be asked to present the whole calculation from the beginning to the end. Um, this will be the screen that your marker will be seeing, you know, when he or she mark your script. As I said, the marker will not be making decision or applying marks against the competency. It's done in the question setting stage. So that again, there's no need to force the competency, uh, rather you should focus in answering according to the question's requirement. So coming to the end, I think, you know, five important things, uh, for exams, I said, especially for the case study. Number one, we say many times already, you need to fully absorb and analyze the pre theme information. You need to be able to step into your persona, your assigned role on the exam day. You should think about your organization, the environment it operates in, who is your stakeholder. Um, you should not start reading your pre theme on the day. You should know it very well beforehand. Number two is understand the requirement and question set and answer the questions. I mean, this may sound quite simple, but again, we had not, we've seen that a lot of students are not able to do that from time to time. It could be under exam stress, um, you know, because you're under time pressure. But I think the ability to able to read carefully is very important. So you should also practice that as well. Uh, answer planning is very important. We do recommend you actually spend some time to think about what you're going to write. Um, so approximately one third of the time. If you want to do answer planning, uh, I would recommend you do it in the answer box itself. So you can actually type in your answer, your plan in your box and then you can, you know, once you start, you can use that as a base to build up your answer as well. Uh, there's no point to do answer planning in a separate, uh, on-screen, uh, scratch screen, uh, and then copy and paste. It's going to, you know, uh, waste your time because you won't be able to use the Ctrl C and the Ctrl V function there between windows. Relate your answer to the pre theme information all the time. So again, you know, we need to able, you to see that you're able to apply that in a real life situations, not just, you know, in a theory out of context way. Uh, finally, it's time management. So in that case that we show in the illustration, that when there's two sub tasks, you need to make sure you apportion your time accordingly. And make sure you do not run out of time for the sessions that you're well known. Uh, for example, in that question, if I do feel that I feel more comfortable, you know, for the P three part, there's no harm for me to start writing that part first. The beauty of taking these on computer format is you can actually move your answer up and down around. It would be quite easy to do. Whereas in the past, when you were doing paper and pen, it would be quite difficult to move around your answer or move around sentence. So make sure you do leave enough time for all the session. I think your chance of passing will be a lot higher when you're able to complete the whole examinations, complete all the tasks as well. So I promise, uh, we, I'm going to give you a few links here. Uh, again, the SEMA Connect, uh, your pre theme will be able to download from there together with all the past exam questions, answer, marking guidance and the examiner reports. Um, the syllabus again is important, especially if you do not understand well the different mix of different level, how they relate to your subject. I think page ninety-two to ninety-three is a very good, uh, illustration, good place to start. Uh, practice exam, again, these are there to showcase the platform for you to get familiarized with the platform to see how the clock will start counting down. We've already put together some articles, uh, some guides in how to write an E report or how to write email. Uh, these will be available from SEMA Connect. And we also have articles from, uh, experts and SEMA examiner on the case study. If you're thinking to purchase, uh, online study material, uh, I would recommend SEMAstudy.com. Uh, it also include one more examination as well. And, um, generally, I think you should, you know, start reading business newspaper or checking website like the BBC Business News. Uh, I think it's a very good way to develop your business sense. You need to develop a appreciation of what is going on around the world. Um, for example, you know, in upcoming may examinations, the strategic case study will be on the oil company. So you should be aware of, you know, how's the oil price doing? Uh, is there any sort of news around, you know, other oil company? So you need to build the understanding, the knowledge of the industry you're working as well. And this is not something you can do just overnight. So it'll be useful, you know, when you start preparing, you start sort of, you know, having habits to update yourself with what is going on around you in the business world. So thank you for joining the today's sessions on case study. Uh, I hope you have found it useful. Uh, if you have any questions, do email us or give us a call, uh, or you can leave message on SEMA Connect as well. Uh, good luck for your examinations and, uh, do let us know about your good news. Thank you. Bye-bye.